For today, we have Richwood High School's ROTC under the direction of Sergeant Brown here to do the color guard presentation. And we have Adriana Newman who will lead the pledge to be followed by the invocation by Mr. Mike Beatty. If you'd like to stand, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we want to thank you, Lord, for having the opportunity to come together, Lord, for our kids, and Father, to try to have the best school system that we can have for them, Lord, so they have a successful life. Father, we thank you for the board. We thank you for Todd, Lord. I pray that your blessing leads today, and please be with all our schools. Keep them safe, I pray, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Board, I need a motion for the approval of amendments for February 11th, 25.
I make a motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
We need a roll call.
Need a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Need a roll call on this one, guys?
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Beatty.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon that misstep. Okay, now we need a motion, and we had a motion for approval of amendments, and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none? Thank you, the motion passed. We need to approve the agenda as it's ready and presented. We don't have anything to add or delete today. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw a move that we approved the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carried. Personnel report, Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We have two positions to announce today. Mr. Thompson, who's in Baton Rouge today, has been working to fill as we get into the very busy season of the spring and into the summer. So if you recall, at the last board meeting, we officially opened Director of Elementary Schools and Director of Student Support Services, and I'd like to make those announcements today. First of all, Director of Elementary Schools, Ms. Katie Wheeler. Katie's in the back. Of course, Katie's been doing a great job filling out the interim capacity this year, so we have removed that interim title from her. So, thank you, Katie. And then Director of Student Support Services, this has been a process that we've been working through for the last week and a half. I know some have been, thought it was a lot longer than that, but I am pleased today to announce Ms. Angela Westerberg is the Director of Student Support Services. Replacing Dr. Autry, who is retiring in July, and I know Dr. Autry's grinning about that as well. So they'll be working closely together over the next two or three months as we make that transition. So congratulations to both of those ladies. Board, just want to make you aware that we will be opening the principalship at East Washita Middle and Lake Shore Elementary this afternoon as well, for those spots that are currently being held by interim principals as well. So that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any cards, Mr. Manley?
No comment cards today.
No comment cards, thanks, sir. Ms. Aileen Smeed, special recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We're excited today to recognize a couple of our students. The Louisiana School Boards Association, as you guys know, because you just came from convention, have an art contest across the state every year, and we have two students who have placed in that contest. So I'm going to introduce them to you and then tell you what it means about their artwork. So in third place, we have Emma Blank. She's a ninth grade student at Western High School. Come on up. One more, there you go. This is her artwork on the screen. It's titled Edgewater Trail at Black Bayou. Mr. Geis, could y'all all shift to the center? That'd be great. Thank you.
Nice job.
And in first place, we have Connor Wrightzel, fifth grade student at Stirlington Elementary School.
Right.
And Connor's artwork is on the screen, and it is titled New Orleans.
Nice, nice.
So both of their artwork will now be in the Governor's Mansion for a couple of weeks on display, and then for the rest of the year, they'll be at the LSBA office in Baton Rouge for everyone to enjoy our amazing artists. Our second recognition today is a recognition of a program, and I'm going to let Mr. Geis take this one.
So many of you have heard of Read, Learn, and Succeed. It is a program that is in five of our schools in Washington Parish, Linnwell, St. Rose, Swayze, and Robinson. So it's headed up by United Way, Miss Michelle Saucer, who sits right over there on the side of her team. They do a great job coming into the schools to read to our kids. And I did it for the first time this year. She has been on me for a while, and I have thoroughly enjoyed it. And I want to introduce you to my reading partner, he's back in the back. Come on up, baby. He's back in the program. So hey, now, we've been reading every month. So I told him last week, I said, hey, you want to come where I work next week? I kind of had this idea of we were reading last week, and he said, sure. So I mentioned to Miss Fivey in the back, and he came up. So not everyone is in the program just to come up and take a picture with the superintendent. So I wish we could, but he's my reading buddy, and we've enjoyed it. I've got you a little something. I want you to stay up here, okay? I just can't express how much this means to our kids and the job that it does in our schools. And I want to encourage you, Michelle, I'm going to do a commercial here, Mark. I want to encourage you, if you're not involved in the program, to get involved. It doesn't take a lot of time of your day, 30 minutes to an hour every day, or every day you go, once a month. So we enjoy it. I think you see some of the books we read on the screen. You see my thing this year? That's just some of them. Anyway, we got it. I want you to stay here and help me do one more thing, okay? All right. So I told a little white lie in this whole thing about why we were recognizing Read, Learn, and Succeed. We certainly wanted to do it. But you know, we're always taught to give honor where honor is due. She doesn't know it, but I'm going to ask Janet Durden to come up and cry a little more. If I told her this, she'd probably agree. She doesn't know. I had to tell her about some folks over here on the front row. Janet's retiring after 40-plus years with the United Way. Let me tell you a little bit about the United Way and what they do for Northeast Louisiana. A lot of folks don't know. Read, Learn, and Succeed, we just talked about. Dollars and Cents Fair, just giving support at times of crisis. During the pandemic, I know they stepped up for not only our students, for employees, and other things, just 2-on-1, I can go on and on and on and on. But it's being because of the leadership of this lady, in which she brought to our community. So Aileen has a proclamation we're going to read today, so Aileen is to read that in honor of Janet.
Whereas Janet Durden has served the United Way with highest distinction for more than 40 years, overcoming adversity and crisis to ensure critical needs are met in disasters and every day for her community. And whereas through her lifelong commitment to service and advocacy, Janet Durden has been a strong force of inspiration to others, encouraging volunteerism in programs to benefit children and adults alike. And whereas throughout her career, Janet Durden has worked with tireless dedication to improve lives and strengthen communities, reaching across the politics of party, poverty, and race. And whereas through her determined efforts, the citizens of this community and indeed throughout the surrounding region have greater access to quality education, financial stability, and improved health, now therefore be it resolved that the Washita Parish School Board members, on behalf of the school system family, honors and applauds Janet Durden for her tireless commitment, outstanding service, and unfailing dedication to leading the United Way of Northeast Louisiana, and expresses sincere appreciation to Janet Durden for her many contributions to the success of United Way programs, including those which directly impact our schools, students, and employees, as well as the lives she transformed throughout her tenure.
Well, this is the proclamation that Janet actually gave her retirement speech last week, and she knocked it out of the park, but you didn't get to hear it. Go back, I'm sure Megan's got it on the United Way Facebook page. It is certainly inspirational, but just a great partner with our school system. I can't thank them enough. She is being replaced, if you can do that, by Tim Lowery, who's right over here, is the new, will be the new president of United Way, and we certainly look forward to keeping those partnerships that Janet began with the school district in the future. Appreciate that. I'm glad Aiden's helping a ton. Listen.
Thank you.
I need to say this. You've heard that Miss Alwayen talked about the United Way. She and the Washita Parish can make a team in the United Way, one of overall United Way volunteer teams of the year. So really, I want to be thankful for this team. It was really fun getting all of them, giving them a round of applause.
And I want to thank my mouth over there for getting to here, making sure she comes without having to tell her. But thank you, Aiden. I'm sorry if Miss Fivey's going to think about this.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item number two, discussion of the status and completion of Stirlington Middle School construction project punch list by Barron Construction Company, and recommendations related there to Rice Gregory.
Hello once again. I've been asked to come to give a update on the current situation at Stirlington Middle School with respect to the construction. What I'm, I'm going to present some dates and some numbers and so forth, and if y'all have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But we granted substantial completion on the project with the general contractor back in July 19th of 2024. And just a little bit of, I guess, purpose of a normal process, is the normal process of substantial completion, substantial completion is actually defined as suitable for the intended use. Most of the time when a job is granted substantial completion, it's not completely through based on the terms of the contract, but it is safe. Everyone has gone through it, the architect, engineers, fire marshal, Department of Health, in Stirlington's case, the city of Stirlington has an inspector. Everyone comes out there and gives it their blessings, and then they develop a punch list. Most of the time, the punch list, sometimes I've had projects where a punch list may be a page long, sometimes it may be 200 pages long. But this is in addition to granting the substantial completion, allowing the owner to move in the facility and start utilizing the facility. We were under the gun, if you remember, this past fall with granting it in July the 19th because we had to mobilize to get the children in there to be able to start the school year. There was a lot of things that still needed to be completed, like the softball field, football field, concession stand, restroom building, were not even close to complete, but we entered those in the punch list as, basically just to complete them. We didn't do an itemized breakdown. So once you grant substantial completion, the contractor takes this document to the courthouse and records it in the courthouse to establish a no lien certificate. A lien certificate is basically making sure as a public body, or really anybody with a construction project, that all the labor and the materials have been paid for on the project before their advanced final payment on the project. Normally, the 45-day lien period in this project runs concurrent with the contractor completing the punch list. This is 45-day period. Sometimes the extension may be another to 60 days or something like that. To date, this project has been 235 days beyond substantial completion. The punch list is still not complete. The, we've never received a final application for payment. We've also submitted to the contractor a change order to adjust the, the only way to adjust a contract is by change order. If you're adjusting the time for weather delays so forth, or the amount of construction. In this one, there was a few things that didn't, for instance, there was in the design a concrete drainage swale going across the pipeline that bleeds out the water of the retention pond across the top of the pipeline. We felt like it was needed to put an armored coating, basically, where the drainage water goes across to prevent any erosion. When we got ready to do it, the pipeline, there's actually five pipelines back there. There's one owner of four, and then another owner of one. Well, the owner of the four really did not want any activity, nothing to do on the pipeline, and suggested they really didn't want it. It's flat enough, it's not going to cause any erosion, and they wanted us not to do it. So the cost of that in the bid documents, we're requesting as part of the change order and the other credits to be able to balance out the work. Later on down the road, if Regina's auditors come in, we need to show proper documentation of what the final payment is there for. So this is, we're up to the point of 235 days on this project without this being done. In the contract documents, there are provisions in Article II of the general conditions that set forth that the owner can carry out the work themselves with a seven-day written notice to the contractor, and if it's not completed in seven days, the owner is required to grant another three-day time period with a written notification, and then the owner will take out the, get someone else to finish the project and to take it out of the withheld funds. I'm basically going to suggest y'all's serious consideration of allowing the contractor maybe a 30-day extension to actually, giving him three times the length of time that the contract requires, but one more time to give them 30 days to finish the job, or we just need to get someone else to complete it.
I appreciate you coming today, Rice, and I wanted Rice to come before the board and give y'all a full update on the status of what we're at during the middle school. And I've been talking to Rice on this thing, and I've been accused of not being a patient man, but this has really tested my patience. You know, as Rice says, we're eight months beyond the substantial completion date on the project. I've got a list here of around 43 item punch lists that have not been finished. I talked to Rice, and Rice told me just what he told the board, that we do have some options available to us. So what I'd like to do is possibly make a motion to the board that we follow through on Rice's recommendation to have Elmer send Barron Construction a formal written letter outlining that they'll be allowed 30 more days to finish the 43-item punch list, and if it's not completed at that time, then we will hire appropriate contractors to go out and complete that job. I think it's, I think it's embarrassing for us to be talking about this at this point in time, especially on a 32-plus million-dollar complex. I just hope that Barron will fulfill their commitment on the project and go ahead and complete the job. If not, I think it's time for us to take the appropriate action to make sure we get somebody out there that can do it. So with that, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we ask to Elmer to send the letter to Barron, officially notifying them of our request to have the punch list fully completed within 30 days. If not, then at that point in time, I'll ask Mr. Gregory to hire the appropriate contractors to finish the punch list. We will take that cost out of the withholdings that we have on the job that is, we've been holding back to make sure that all the punch list items are taken care of. So it won't cost the board anything as far as additional monies. We'll just be paying a different contractor to finish the punch list, where we hope to pay Barron, but it looks like we've had some problems getting it done. So I'd like to make that motion.
Well, motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions or anything? Okay.
Thanks, Rice.
All right, thank you.
Item number three, consider extension of superintendent's contract. Mr. Geis is nearing the end of his second year. It started on July 4th and has done an excellent job and received good evaluations, has fulfilled all his job description duties, worked well with us and the community. And it's my honor to say that I'd like to extend this through December 31st, 2028, which is the legal limits allowed by law. So if you have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we extend Mr. Geis's contract as outlined by Mr. Como, and I just want to add that I'm speaking for myself, my behalf, but I do think I speak for the board, and everybody can make their own comment, but I've been totally pleased with the outstanding job Todd has done. He's been outgoing, he's out front, he's a leader, he takes care of our school system, and I think I've heard, I hadn't heard nothing but great comments. As a board member, I've been around a long time. I've served under four superintendents. Every superintendent has their own style, not to say it's bad or good, but Todd is definitely a hands-on person. He shows up every morning, early. He probably gets there around 6:30 every day and puts a full day in.
5:30?
5:30? Yes. I've called him at 6:30 before, and he picked the phone up. I'm down at the office. So that kind of speaks about the great work ethic he's got. He's a great ambassador for our community. He builds relationships. He's kind of got a great team here at the central office that supports him in what he wants to do, and I think we're blessed as a school system to have a man like Todd to come through our system, to be able to lead our system in the direction that he's doing. So with that long space, I'd like to make that motion.
And I'd like to say amen to what you just said, and I think the rest of the board members would feel the same.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Yes, sir.
I still can't get him to help me with my yard. You asked me a lot of things. I don't know if you've asked me that yet.
I mean, Harold, let me know if he don't know where it goes, your yard.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none.
Mr. Como, just real quick, I appreciate that. Appreciate the vote of council, but I think Greg said it well. It's not because of me, it's because of a lot of these folks, almost this whole side of the room over here and what they do. They're the ones that are working, and I appreciate them so much and what they do. They're great, great leaders as well, couldn't do it without them, wouldn't want to do it without them, but thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number four, discussion of Linnwell Elementary Cafeteria Room remodel. Mr. Hicks?
Yes. Y'all are all pretty aware, I guess, of Linnwell School out here, out past the paper mill in West Monroe, Louisiana. It's been over 100 years old. It's, it's just about crumbling in a lot of places. I estimate about 115 years old is how old it really is. I went to elementary there in the second grade, all the way up to the seventh, and the cafeteria is in the same shape just about it was back when it was built. They did take the stage out and try to make it look a little bit bigger, and it's done, it's done well for all these years, but they're having a lot of problems with everything out there that's just crumbling. So I just wanted to ask the board that we would get a contract, you know, out, and I won't use Tim Brandon and Associates that contracted out, to see what all we do need out there, and we're supposed to meet there one day this week, and so I'm not finalized yet on the time, but I believe it's going to be tomorrow at 2:00. But we got, got a lot of work to do with that cafeteria, and so I think, I think it'll be well-used, because the principal is just about the end of her rope trying to feed the kids out there, because the size of that cafeteria is about the size it was when I went there. I didn't have nearby as many kids they do now, so. But anyhow, I'd like to make that motion that we could get the contractor out there to give us a price and go from there.
Second.
Are you wanting to appoint Tim Brandon Associates as the?
Yeah, Tim Brandon Associates, that's right. Architect, I'm sorry, yeah, Tim Brandon.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none.
All right, thank you.
Good job, Jim.
Policy consideration, JSDAE. Ms. Nichols or Ms. Ferguson, or you are?
Good afternoon. Thank goodness, we have been very proactive on this policy. We've discussed it numerous times. However, the legislature has come back and made a couple of recommendations, but to our policy will only be a couple of little minor tweaks, so we are asking you for consideration for this policy, JCDAE, regarding cell phones and telecommunications devices, and we will not vote on it until the next board meeting.
Board, just a little background, Bessie approved this change to the policy, basically to add smartwatches to the policy, and asked us, or required us, to define the instructional day. So that's what this policy does. We were supposed to have it ratified by March 1st. Of course, the State Department did not get it to us until late February. They are aware. All the other boards are following suit with us as well. It's just those two major changes to the policy, just two little tweaks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, financial report for January 31st, 2025. Ms. Micas?
Good afternoon, board. You have in your packets the financial statements for the period ending January 31st, 2025. We are a little more than halfway through the, the current fiscal year. I am happy to report that we are still on task with our budget, as was adopted earlier in the year last September. You look at the general fund, we're at 96.6% of where we were at this time last year. That's 32.9 million. In District 1, we're at 30.7 million. That's 110% of where we were this time last year. I would also like to bring to your attention the 1968 sales tax and the 1995 sales tax last month. I know I had mentioned that sales tax collections had slipped a little bit, but they seem to be catching up, so that's good news for everyone. But, but those do fluctuate. They're going to fluctuate all year long, so we really don't, don't put those pennies in the bank yet until we, until they come in. The West Washita sales tax, you'll start to see, or as you see, we're at 92.97% of where we were at this time last year. As you're all aware, during the pandemic, we had kind of halted a lot of construction that was on the west side because... that was on the west side because we really didn't know what was going to happen to our sales tax collections, and that west side construction is funded with the sales tax. So we really held back for about three years, only doing what was absolutely mandated. So we're, we're starting to catch up, so there's a lot of activity going on on the west side now, and we'll start to see that fund balance drop down a little bit, back, back closer to 15 million where it should be. I would like to remind everyone, I know we've been getting calls, I know I've said it, and I know y'all, y'all say it, but just a reminder, there is no March supplement. So, during, when we had ESRA funds, we did have supplements that would go out in October and March. Even last school year, we had a state stipend. We did half in October before fall break, half in March before spring break, but this year, we did still get the same state stipend, but it was mandated to be distributed prior to December, so that all went out in October. And I know we have gotten a few calls, so I just wanted to, to make that statement again, that there is no March supplement coming this year before spring break. Anyone have any questions?
Questions, comments? Board, I gave, I got my friendly secretaries to fill out a form for us to show the projects for 2024 through current date. Some of them are completed, some of them are ongoing, some of them are upcoming, so if you check over that, make sure you've done everything you need to do as far as getting the architect and appointed and that type of thing to do a project. If not, you might want to think about that in the future. Thank you. All right. Consider approval of corporate endeavor agreement between State of Louisiana and OPSB.
So, there are two schools that have received a cooperative endeavor allocation from the legislature. That is, West Washita High School received $150,000 allocation to build a walking track and all of the required activities that go along with that. And West Monroe High School received $25,000 to purchase a mini truck. So, in the process of, of requesting those funds and filing all the necessary paperwork, it was brought to our attention that we do need board approval to authorize Mr. Como to sign all of the necessary paperwork to accept those funds. So I'm asking that you grant Mr. Como the authority to sign to accept the, the funds and take care of that paperwork.
Make that motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? No? There is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, help for doing my charts. Automate construction and renovation projects, Mr. Hemphill?
Good afternoon, board. In your handout, you'll see the reports that we have. Sometimes I feel like a broken record here lately, same song and dance of weather and just things that are going on that slows up construction. So, we're still moving forward on our projects, just get slow at some times, so we just have to be patient and wait on Mother Nature to dry things out so we can move forward. So, y'all want to look over that? If you got any questions, feel free to answer anything you may have.
I saw where Starick High School at one time, we were looking at a March completion date. Now it's July. Is that due to the weather?
I think that July was their original completion date.
We were just ahead of schedule?
Damon Mayfield had moved that up to March, but looking back now, that the way the weather's been holding them up, it's pushed it all the way back to the original completion date.
We're feeling pretty comfortable on the July 3rd date, is that correct?
Yeah.
Did we ever get the gas meter set at the Richwood Middle School's, Washita purpose building?
We have called Atmos. It's my understanding that as an owner, we can't do anything until the contractor has submitted all his permits through the inspectors and Atmos themselves. Once that's done, they give me word and I call and set up the account, and they come set the meter. I've been in contact with Tyler Manns Construction and also Cedric of last week concerning that, so I'm just waiting to hear back from them to get that, get that done.
That's one of the main, one of the main holdups right now. Now, what about the electricals? Is that, has that been finished?
The what now?
The electricals.
Yeah. Yeah, all that's, all that's completed. All righty, no more questions. I appreciate, appreciate y'all.
Thanks, David.
All right, we have evaluation of bids. Mr. Peters, two items?
Yes, sir. Thank you, board. First, on our evaluation of bids, we have RFP 14-25. That's the kitchen camera project. After reviewing both RFP submissions from our vendors, the RFP committee determined Video Link to be the highest-scoring vendor for the kitchen camera project. So I'm requesting the board approve the RFP submittal from vendor Video Link in the amount of $254,235.
We have a motion to approve?
I saw a move that we approved.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none.
What does RFP stand for?
Requests for Proposals.
It's just hard to keep up with all these brief words.
Yeah, that's true. Up next, we've got bid 19-25, West Monroe High School Football Field Renovations and Improvements. I'm requesting the board approve the lowest responsive bidder. We conducted the bid opening yesterday with two bids submitted. We're currently verifying the turf spec by the lowest bidder to ensure that bid requirements are met on that turf. Once these are verified, I'm requesting the board to approve the lowest responsive bidder.
And if we don't approve, if it don't meet specs, we roll to the next option?
Right.
Okay. Have a motion to approve contingent upon standards being met for this bid.
That's a move that we approved.
Did you have a question or did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
All right, thank you.
Well, second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you. Permission to bid, Mr. Peters, while you're there?
All right, we have FS 8-25 Warehouse Cooler and Freezer Doors. The funding source being child nutrition, nutrition equipment and a budget amount of We also have bid number 23-25, and that is the property sale at 3420 Gordon Avenue. We set a budget, and that budget is 100% of the appraised value of the property, and that's $17,700. The bid's going to require the highest responsive bidder to bid at least 100% of the appraised value on the property. Then we have bid 24-25, and that's a property sale. That's the old Burke School on Highway 139. The budget there is 100% of the appraised value, $67,600, and I'm requesting the board to grant permission to, to bid on that property as well. Next, and I apologize, I had a typo on that bid number. The bid number should be 28-25, and that is for our school buses that we're going to purchase through M&amp;O with a budget of $2,200,000. On those school buses, we're purchasing 15 school buses, 11 that seat 77 passengers each, two buses at seat 30 with a lift, and then two buses at seat 30 without a lift.
Any questions? Excuse me, no, yeah.
Last, we have bid number 27-25. That's West Monroe High School's practice field renovations and improvements. The funding source being West Washita Sales Tax with a budget set of $3,400,000.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, we have a motion to grant permission to bid on these five items?
I saw a move.
A motion and?
Second.
A second? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? No? And there is none. Thank you, Jerry. This year is rolling right on by. It will be over shortly, and testing times coming up that are really important to not only the students but our system, so we're hoping for good results there. Our next board meeting is April 8th, 12 o'clock. Mr. Geis?
Mr. Como hit the nail on the head, I think, and Mr. Thompson's not here, he's in a meeting at the State Department today, but we are already turning our attention to the end of the year, but focusing heavily on next year as well. So, he has begun the process of staffing with our school, which is such an important process for us, to make sure that we have the teachers that we need and stay within the budget that Ms. Micas and, and the board has laid out. So, that'll go on for the next couple of months, so you won't see much of Jason outside of his office. It's good news, Richwood High School Boys Basketball will be playing in the state semifinals tomorrow, or tomorrow evening, early evening at 4:30. Richwood High School will dismiss at 11:00 tomorrow. Orlando, Mr. McCormick has been working on the logistics of handling all of that, so they will have time to, their teachers and students will have time to get to Lake Charles for that game. You have a schedule, a copy, I reminded you in the email this week, District Choir and Band Festivals beginning this week, choirs tomorrow at ULM, band will be at West Washita Thursday and Friday this week. They are full days. I know you can't sit and, and watch all of it, but if you get an opportunity or anyone, it's, it's, it's great to see our kids perform and do such a great job. Spring break, I don't need to remind our folks, but it's coming up week after next, the 24th through the 28th, so always looking forward to that as we move forward.